We call to order the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting. Welcome, everybody, and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the red flag of the Constitution of our own. I salute the flag of the United States of America as the United States of America.
It's been a long time since I missed it. Okay. First item on the agenda is to approve the regular meeting agenda. John, do you know of any changes? Yes, sir?
I'd like to ask the Commissioners if we could amend the agenda to move the county report up to before the public input because we have the Forest Service here to give us an update on the fire as well as the bear team.
I wonder if we shouldn't just, from here on out, just pass some of this agenda item right after the...
That's what I was thinking.
For a while.
During the pledge.
Have you all gonna be here for a while, I think? Season-ending event. I remember that remark. Okay, would that change, does he might have from town? Get a motion to approve the agendas of ended?
Form a motion to approve.
All those favors, six of five say aye. Motion passes. Okay, at this time, we have the United States Forest Service to give us an update on the fire and the bear team and whatever y'all's agenda is, so have at it.
I'm gonna go over to the bathroom.
Okay, do you need a mic?
No, I can go.
Okay.
So, yeah, I just wanna, just would like to make sure the Commissioners that I can give you an update on where around with the fire. Basically, you know, it's still a full suppression objective. You know, we've built lines pretty much around the west side of the fire, down on the south, all the way up to east side, and we're scouting these dashed black lines or proposed town line. This is basically Forest Road 150, which goes up to Walding. On this side, we're using Forest Road 157, basically all the way up to Edmosa. And then we're looking at an option to bring the hand or utilize a road that comes east from Mall Lake across to 157 and back down to Edmosa. You know, basically, the fire behavior here on the south and South Highway 152 is pretty minimal. It's basically going down to the Pinon-Juniper fuel types, very little grass under there, and it's basically going out by itself. We don't really feel like we're gonna have to do any hand ignition on any of these indirect lines to basically secure that. It's gonna secure itself, so we're fairly confident with that. We are doing a little bit of burning right here along the McKnight Road, basically from where it splits off from East Canyon and continues on up to the cabin. We're doing some burning along there because this pocket of fuel right in here in East Canyon, that's fairly thick timber, really receptive to any sort of spotting, and it's displaying pretty active fire behavior. And so, we are, we're doing a little burning along that McKnight Road, real patiently from the east to the west, just to keep up with fire progression, the main fire further south of it there. So, we're just keeping up with that. We don't want to see it cross the McKnight Road and get into this, which would then allow it to get on the west side of the crest of the Black Range. We want to keep it on the east side as much as we can. And that's basically, you know, it's kinda stuck because it hits the ridge between McKnight Mountain and Reed's Peak because of the predominant southwest winds. You know, we've had, we've seen some pretty big fire growth, and it's, you know, it comes up to the crest, but the southwest wind just blows it right back onto itself, and luckily, it's been safe. But it continues to be challenging country. We did explore some options to utilize trails to stop it on the north. We had some folks in there yesterday on horseback looking at trail systems and whatnot, but it's still with the fire behavior that is displaying up here, we, those options aren't viable. So, we're gonna go ahead and move further north and utilize the roads. And realistically, it's probably gonna rain before it gets to any of those containment lines. We did get a report from the Weather Service. We have a meteorologist on staff at the fire calling IMET, and he's saying that we have the probability of rain for Tuesday, Wednesday is, we're looking like we're probably gonna get about a quarter inch of rain over the fire area. You know, this still could, I mean, it's a prediction, and it could possibly not happen, but hopefully it will cross our fingers. But we're feeling pretty confident about the lines that we picked. You know, it's a big box, but we feel like, you know, the probability of success that we can, we can hold it there if need be. And so, that's what we're looking at. You know, we've done a lot of prep work around the Cooney, the Bloodgood Place. The work is ongoing in there in case the fire does get down here, and we have to do structure protection. We're getting prepared for that. So, that should be done in the next day or two. All of our stuff, the McKnight Cabin is safe. We protected that, mitigated the, just started a fire there. The fire's already passed McKnight Cabin to the north, and we've done some structure protection up at Reed's Peak to protect that lookout tower and that cabin. We're starting to talk to the folks at Edmosa and, you know, letting them know the fire's approaching that direction. We had a public meeting there last night, and a very, very supportive group of folks standing in room only at that public meeting.
Where?
At Edmosa.
Where was that, or Winston?
Or Winston. Yeah, at Winston. So, yeah, good support there. They understand our plan and are really supportive, so. Let's see, what else do I got for you? I guess the current size is about, it's on your map there, but it's 89,000 acres. It continues to grow. I think today will probably, today will be a big growth day. You know, the weather's predicted to be record temps and record temperatures. We're probably gonna be pushing 100 degrees here in Silver City and up on the fire. It'll, that'll translate to about 95 to 98 degrees up on the fire, so I would expect to see a column in the air today. Any questions?
Any questions for Gabe? So, once it got up to the crest there, you didn't have to worry about those cabins down in East Canyon, and you're worrying less and less about the Bloodgood Place and Cooney and all that, right?
You know, we're prepared for it, so, you know, our comfort with it is higher. You know, the more we can be prepared in the event something crazy happens, the better we go about it, so. So, we've had, the state has actually brought some of the inmate crews from Lasuna, and they had, I think, three crews down in there doing a whole bunch of fuels mitigation work, cutting out dead branches and limbing trees up and that kinda stuff, and, you know, helping those homeowners to get ready for the fire. And our, you know, the team basically has done that, and also, we've scouted out this line, and we're gonna, we're gonna build that indirect line in there to exclude the Cooney from the fire, so, yeah.
Any other questions? I understand. Okay, so hand it off to whoever's next, I guess.
Al Cox with the Bear Team.
Good morning, Al. How are you?
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thanks for having us this morning. This morning, what I'd like to do is just kinda give you just a brief overview of what Bear or the Burned Area Emergency Response Program is, and then give you a little bit of idea of what we've got planned. With the fire burning and as we're moving on into the season here and closer to the monsoons, Kelly decided that it would be good to get the bear team assembled. And so, we assembled last Monday, a week ago Monday, and started assessing the, pretty much the severely burned areas on the fire. The bear team is comprised of a hydrologist, soil scientist, we have an archaeologist, engineers, and our recreation specialists on the team. Most of the work that we've been doing is we've been out on the ground, kind of assessing where the highly severely burned areas have been. These are the areas that could cause some erosion and possible flooding to downstream communities and that. So, that's been the most important part that we do. We look at emergency treatments that we can do to help reduce erosion and then slow down flooding on Forest Service land. As we look at treatments that we can do, we then start putting a dollar cost to those, and we put into a request to our Washington office. This is a rapid assessment that occurs, and so, the turnaround time for that money coming back to the forest is relatively quick. So, we hope that we will know by the middle of next week if and how much money we will get. Most of the work that we've been doing is been working on the, we prioritized areas over on the east side of the fire, overlooking at the areas that would flow down into the Kingston and Hillsborough area. We've also been looking at the area in the Guyenas Drainage and the Noonday Drainage because those are the areas in the fire from the beginning that had some very severe burned areas and also would be coming down into the communities of San Lorenzo and then down into the lower Membras, the Guyenas area and Royal John Mine area. So, most of the things that the folks have been looking at is of our treatments is doing some seeding. The important part for these highly severely burned areas is to get vegetation back onto those as quickly as you can. That helps slow down water because most of the vegetation that's been in these areas has been burned off. So, getting seed down on these areas is a priority, and so, that was one of the reasons why we're here. Typically, the bear teams come once the fire is 50% or more contained, but we realized that we were close to the monsoon and being close to the communities and that we wanted to get done and moving early. So, what we've done is we've started looking at the southern part of the forest and, of the fire, I should say, and looking at the data that we've had from the, pretty much the beginning of the fire. The other part, the phase two of this, will start next week as we get another image of the severely burned areas in that, or our burn severity map, that we get a satellite shot. That'll be taken on Saturday, and then we'll start looking at the northern areas. One of the areas I know that is concerned to you folks is the Noonday area. That has been some burned in there. We've started to look at that, but we also know that there has been some additional burning in that area. The map that we'll be getting on Saturday will give us a better idea of the data there. So, we haven't really looked at a lot of treatments in that Noonday area based on information that we're gonna get here starting Saturday. But we have looked at Guyenas. We've been down on the ground there. We're looking at seeding blocks. We use a annual seeds mixture that is native or to the New Mexico area. Those seeds germinate very quickly once we start getting some moisture on those, and then they start dying out, and that creates then a duff layer or a mulch layer that then the natural plants will start coming in. This seed we're looking at would be put down aerially and looking at a contract for that, and we're looking at the seed there to get the seed to the area here. Other things that we're looking at in the area, particularly on this side in Grant County, is working with the New Mexico Department of Transportation for 152, seeing what erosion structures and what cleaning out of culverts and ditches we need to do along that road so that when the rains do come, the water can flow smoothly and doesn't get behind a debris dam or something like that that then causes damage farther on. We've also been assessing our campgrounds and recreation sites and trails to see what needs to be done in those so we can secure those so that eventually those can be opened back up. There probably be, we'll probably be some seasonal closures on those based on when we have the monsoons and that to make sure that we are protecting the public in those areas. I know that the Department of Transportation is working with the Incident Management Team to figure out how soon 152 can be opened up. So, that's basically the treatments that we're looking at. Our Bear Assessment Report, we're finishing that up. All of the specialists have been writing their reports. We've been doing the analysis, recommending our treatments. We hope to have that wrapped up this evening and be able to present that to Kelly tomorrow. Once we get approval from the Forest Supervisor, then that request will go into our regional office for the funding and then on into the Washington office for the approval of the funding to come here, which our hope is to get that by next week, get the contracts let, and by the first part of July, get that seed down on the ground. That's gonna be the most important part. I've passed out a handout to you that kinda gives an update on what Bear is and then the different kinda phases of rehabilitation that occurs on fires. So, if anyone has any questions?
Questions for Al?
Yes, what are we looking at when it comes to future big flooding in the areas now that we don't have no vegetation to hold back that water?
That's a good question. One of the things is that our hydrologist model what we would foresee in flow coming down into the drainages where we've had high severity burning in that. What they do is they model a 25-year storm with a one-hour peak precipitation, and that gives us an idea of what could happen. I mean, we could have a storm that's worse, and we could have storms that are less. But what our modeling is showing pretty much for the Guyenas Drainage, which is a very large drainage and has had a number of areas that have burned highly severe, highly severely, is that we're looking at about a 40% increase of water that could be coming down if we had a 25-year storm with an hour of precipitation peak time. So, it gives us a chance to work with the agencies that are working on private land, also looks at what kinds of treatments that we could get. So, one of the things that, working with the county in that, is to get people prepared there to know what could happen down in those areas there. I've got, and looking at Noonday is a little bit less, probably about 30% increase in that, but we'll know a little bit more after we get that map here on Saturday, and then we can predict that a little bit better.
And I'm assuming that because it stayed on the crest, that the actual tributary of the members up in there is fine at this time?
There will be some of that, you know, as Guyenas and Noonday flow down into the Membras, you'll get some increase in water in that.
I'm talking about like a Powderhorn and...
Right, at this time right now, we're not really sure exactly because we haven't got the information. We'll be modeling that starting next week on that. That's kind of north of that. But as Gabe was saying, there hasn't been a lot of burning in that area of East Canyon. We've been working on burnouts there, correct? And those have been more of a low-intensity type burn?
Above the cabin or below the cabin? Were you doing burnout?
Oh, it's above the cabin.
Okay. Any other questions?
And we have, we're keeping the public informed on NCWeb, which is the computer program, and you can get that information there. And then the bear team is set up at the conference center, and we really appreciate the opportunity to be in that facility. So, if anyone needs maps or anything, please look us up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell, you have anything for us today, or?
I've got a ballot, so I want to ask a question about...
Any questions? I think we had some people from the Environment Department. Are you here for the fire, or? No, I guess not. Okay, well, thank you all very much, and we'll let you go back to work unless you just wanna stay and watch us. Okay, at this time, we'll have public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and wanna hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the County Manager's Office. So, at this time, is there anybody here that would like to speak during public input? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium and state your name for the record.
My name's Johnny Reed. I'm here representing Grant County Soil and Water Conservation District. Following Bear Team actually leads right into what I wanted to talk about today, which is the watershed. I'm here to actually address some issues and inform that we've been working, we have been working in conjunction with Grant County officials, emergency officials and fire officials concerning the Silver Fire, not the fire itself, but the aftermath of the fire, which shows potential for floods. You know, we all know that there's a higher potential for flooding with the loss of vegetation along these drainages, and he spoke of the areas of concern right now, Guyenas and Noonday. And I understand, I thought Gavillon is also an area of concern, and with the fire cresting at McKnight, and if the winds change, of course, McKnight could become of concern in the future. And as the fire progresses, if it starts going northwest, it could affect the upper Membras drainages as well. And so, what we do is basically, we have been working with Sierra County and state and federal officials to try to implement an emergency plan for this type of situation. And one of the programs of urgency is NRCS's EWP program or Emergency Watershed Program, which does provide assistance for emergencies. They provide recovery as well. They also provide, once the fire is 100% contained, assistance in setting up barriers, easements for floodplains, that type of thing. As Grant County Soil and Water Conservation District, though, they need a sponsor, somebody like the NRCS needs a sponsor to distribute the money and manage the situation, and that's what we do. We had an emergency meeting of our board last night and approved this. Now, I understand that it might be possible, Sierra County's already applied for this EWP program, and since this is one fire, but both sides of the mountain, Sierra, Grant County may be able to partner with Sierra on this, and it may have already been implemented. So, we're trying to find that out, but right now, either way, we went ahead and signed this last night to try to get this going. Of course, this is congressional appropriation money, and we all know how that's been working lately, so we're not 100% sure how this is going to work. It's a 75-25 program, meaning that NRCS covers 75% of the cost, and, of course, we are bear the other 25%. There are agencies which might help with the 25%, like Homeland Security, possibly FEMA, but we, and we're in touch with the Corps. We plan to implement a plan, a program to where we're in contact with private agencies such as propane companies, septic companies, that type of thing in case of floods, as well as Sheriff's Department and all other public entities to implement a program. I think our biggest urgency, however, is public education about the possibility of this flood. I actually was at the fire meeting last Friday night in San Lorenzo, and when people around the middle Membras and the lower Membras found out that the fire is pretty much contained in that area, there was a big sigh of relief. I don't think they understand the potential of what could occur. I'm not saying it's going to occur because in a time of droughts, we all, you know, sometimes there's higher-than-normal rains in a short period of time, so people need to be prepared for this, and that's what we need to do, hopefully partnering with Grant County to educate the public. And there is a meeting Friday night at 6:00 PM at Thunderbird Lodge. It's a fire meeting, but we intend to be there to start this education program. And I highly urge County Commissioners to back a program to help educate the public along the Membras. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Any questions for Ms. Reed?
Yes, thank you very much, Ms. Reed. We'll probably be contacting you. We're trying to put together an echo management group, and we'll definitely be contacting you with that way you can participate in this group, and hopefully we could plan better for the future together. We appreciate what you do. Thank you.
You must be important. All of the reporters are following you out. Okay, any other public input today? Nope? Okay. Yeah, we'll go into the minutes, take a motion to approve or disapprove the June 11th special meeting minutes, the June 11th work session minutes, and the June 13th regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve the minutes, June 11th special meeting minutes, work session minutes, and regular meeting minutes of 2013.
I second. There's a motion and a second to approve the June 11th special meeting minutes, June 11th work session minutes, June 13th regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. My next report, to approve or disapprove the cash flow analysis ending May 31st, 2013. We went through this, the work sessions, and you might want John to go do this again for, since we didn't, you know, since we didn't have TV on Tuesday, let's go through the work, the cash flow again. Okay?
I did.
Mary Alice likes it. She wants to hear it over and over and over.
In the package, you have the cash flow report ending May 31st, 2013. Start with the general fund. The actual cash balance on July 1st, 2012 was $4,100,855. Revenues year-to-date are $7,156,464. Transfers year-to-date of $302,000. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $2,859,344. Salaries and benefits year-to-date of $5,121,601. Leaves the cash balance at May 31st, 2013 of $2,974,373. With projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2013 of $68,756. Leaves the cash balance at June 30th, 2013 of $3,43,129, less the required reserve of $2,807,123. Leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2013 of $236,007. On the second page is the revenues. As of May 31st, we've collected 78.63% of the budgeted revenues. Page three is the transfers. We've done 19.36% of the budgeted transfers as of May 31st. The next is the road fund. Road fund started the year July 1st, 2012 at $425,180. Revenues year-to-date of $1,41,743. Transfers year-to-date of $300,000. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $252,375. Salaries and benefits year-to-date of $1,143,130. Leaves the cash balance at May 31st, 2013 of $371,417. With projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2013 of $323,110. Leaves the cash balance at June 30th, 2013 of $694,528, less the required reserve of $130,935. Leaves a surplus at June 30th, 2013 of $563,592. The next is the Corrections Fund. It started the year July 1st, 2012 at $394,379. With revenues year-to-date of $799,926. Operating expenditures year-to-date of $498,284. Salaries and benefits year-to-date of $1,648,776. Leaves the cash balance at May 31st, 2013 of a negative $952,755. With projected revenues, expenditures, and transfers through June 30th, 2013 of a positive Leaves the cash balance at June 30th, 2013 of $102,028.
Any questions on the cash flow analysis? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to approve the cash flow analysis.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We approve the cash flow analysis ending May 31st, 2013.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the cash flow analysis. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the expenditure report? I think you had two out of the ordinary expenses in this report, one for asphalt and one for the convention center. Corey Camino, something?
Yes, it was...
Everything was normal?
Yes.
Expenditures?
We had $40,037 for the conference center construction, and it was $113,591 on the projects.
Okay, take a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to...
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the June 21st, 2013 financial report.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the June 21st, 2013 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving into new business. We need to approve or disapprove the appointment of two members to the Grant County Lodgers Tax Committee. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Ms. Juanita Escobedo at large for the at-large applicant, and Teresa Doll-Birdine from Little Toad Creek for the tourism-related applicant.
Second. There's a motion and a second to appoint Juanita Escobedo and Teresa Doll-Birdine to the Grant County Lodgers Tax Committee. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
I just hope I didn't miss that number too badly.
Which one, Escobedo? Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber Commerce, Ms. McAndrew's going to give us her quarterly visitor center and tourism report. Welcome, Sissy, how are you today?
I'm doing great. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, and staff, as always, it's a pleasure to be here today and report back to you about how things are going with tourism in our area. We are, of course, not quite at year-end, but wanted to let you know where we're at, and I will be back with the final numbers. The number of visitors to date as of yesterday is 15,934. The number of visitor guides that we have mailed out, and this is where we're using the county fulfillment funds, 5,525. The average number of daily visitors for this month has been 48.96. We actually had 51 yesterday. This is 10 more people than we were having last year, but of course, we had the Whitewater Fire last year, and I want to recognize that we're working very, very close with the Forest Service. They're coming in every day, they're updating staff, they're bringing in materials, and we're trying to get the word out, we're doing a lot with social media to let people know that Grant County and Silver City is still open for business, that the Trail of the Mountain Spirits, or as we know it, the Inner Loop, is open. We're working with the Cliff Dwellings, it's open, the west part of the Gila National Forest is open. So we've been very, very lucky. It's hard to say that it's been good for us with the fires in other parts of the country, but the media's been focusing on that. We were really worried when this fire got the name of the Silver Fire. We thought, that's it, where tourism is just going to drop off. But luckily, we have not been getting the national media coverage. So people are coming in, they've heard about the fire, but they're still able to go do the tourism activities that they want to, and we're going to continue to keep ahead of it. The state tourism office is also very well aware of this, so I think we're much better prepared this year to communicate and to keep business going. One of the messages that we have out is that the fire is 30-plus miles away. This morning was pretty much an exception, as we could see the haze coming in, but otherwise, we do have clear skies. So we're just going to stay on it and try to keep the message out there and keep the people coming in. The local restaurants and tourism businesses are feeling that we've turned the corner, that the trend is up. It's not just a short-term thing, but they're feeling like it's been going on for several months now, and that business is returning better than it has been for the last three or four years. We will work with those other niche markets, a lot of those are the small, local businesses like furniture stores and clothing stores and other businesses that aren't quite related to tourism, and we need to find a way of transferring that growth in the economy back over to them. Real estate sales are up. Not as much in land, we're seeing a lot of people buying existing houses. We're hoping that that will continue, but of course, with the prime rate starting to go back up, we may see that start to level out a little bit. The Silver City Museum has had a 30% increase in visitation this year. The University Museum is up over 1,000 people from last year. And we're also working with a lot of groups that are planning to come in, conferences, meetings. Luckily, they're planning ahead, and so we're helping to coordinate with them, everything from lodging to where they'll have food, tours downtown, things of that nature. Tomorrow morning, I'll actually be giving tours to the students and parents coming in for orientation at Western New Mexico University. So we're really trying to broaden our touch with the community, work with everybody to help promote our local economy. In the new budget year, we will have some new area maps. The map pads that we've been using are about 14, 15 years old. They don't have a lot of the streets on them, and so we've actually revised that. Luckily, we're able to use the existing GIS system to really update everything. We now have that technology to help us. So we'll be printing new maps. We also will have a visitor's guide coming out, a new one in the fall, and as always, we're looking for more volunteers. We're continuing to stay open seven days a week. We'll be open the 4th of July, and just really trying to continue to get the word out that this is a great place to visit and a wonderful place to live. Are there any questions at all?
Anybody have questions for Sissy?
Sounds bright. Sounds like thanks for coming back and hoping you...
We're feeling very good, and of course, there's a lot of passion with everybody, and we appreciate working with the county and your Lodgers Tax Committee. Very knowledgeable group of people, and they help us move forward.
What they've been doing with Western, acquiring that the parents come in and visit the campus, it's been great. I know I'm going to be attending an ice cream social, I think it's tomorrow night, or tonight? Tonight! It's tonight, at the Gardens event. So that's always fun.
Well, I hope that all your statistics prove out, because, you know, we've been losing students out of our schools and droves for the last 20 years, and we were even losing them the last semester of school, last school year, out of both school districts. So hopefully, that trend will start changing, because that's the true future of our county, right there is.
Well, and I think that's one of our... One of our real challenges, because the people that we see in the real estate growth is actually more couples, and so to try to bring families in, we'll continue to try to work along those lines. We are trying to, as far as the marketing with the Arts and Cultural District and the county, let people know that everything is family-friendly, there's a lot to do. That's a long-term process, but we are working on it.
I would ask the Green Chamber to get behind the additional grocery receipts tax that the county's asking for, too. I'd like to have an official vote from you people and see you behind this to... We're trying hard to bring some new things to the county, to help with tourism and help with retention of families. It's nice to have retired people move here. We love them. We need to get our families staying here. When you talk about furniture stores and all those other businesses, that's where those dollars are spent, is from families. It's nice that tourism's up. We like those people, too. Come and bring us your money. So I'm formally asking you guys to get behind our grocery receipts tax for our infrastructure bond that's coming up, and that's going to be, those ballots will be going out the 29th, and they have to be returned on the 19th of August, the 29th of July. So we would appreciate that from you guys. And with that, unless anybody else has anything?
I totally agree.
We need your help. Thanks, Sissy.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next one, we actually need a projector. Yeah, it says here that it has a short PowerPoint projection, so we may want to move that back just a little bit, and move on till we can get that set up. I just looked over there, and there wasn't one, so...
We can do that.
Okay. Is that all right with you, John?
There are a lot of people here, and if you want me to just do the presentation without PowerPoint, I'll do that, too, but...
If that's fine with you, I mean, we apparently didn't catch that.
I think we're just showing how hard Randy is to this sort of...
Yeah, maybe all we need is Randy.
There's agendas out there today, what are you on?
If that's okay with you, John, you're welcome to do your presentation at this time.
John slash Randy.
How are you, Mr. Trent?
Thank you for allowing me to give you this update on the Sunzia Transmission Project. The PowerPoint I had was only nine or 10 pages long, and mainly what it had were different maps and things like that, showing, you know, the BLM preferred route, and mainly, I was going to talk about the newsletter that just recently came out, and I believe, hopefully, all of you have received a copy of that, yes. And so I was just going to go over that real briefly, and then see if they had any questions from the commission or anybody from the public as well. As you know, we're starting to see some light at the end of the tunnel. The final environmental impact statement was published on the 14th of June, and that triggers a comment period, but the only comments that they're taking at this time, since they took comments for four years, the only comments they're taking is on the land use. And there's two land uses in New Mexico. One is, two segments up close to Socorro, one right north of Socorro, and the other is west of Socorro, and then a loose segment just north of Dimming. And those land uses, someone would have to go to the BLM offices. Of course, the one by Dimming would go to the Las Cruces office to find out information on that land use, or the one in Socorro, they'd go to the Socorro office. So that's the only public input that they're taking, is just on that land use. The other public comment period has been closed. As you know, we had numerous public hearings over the last four years. During the process, Sunzia studied 2,200 miles of alternative routes at different suggestions from the comments that we obtained during the public hearings, and then it helped BLM come up with their final route. So what we are anticipating is, with everything in place after this study, that we will obtain a record of decision sometime in September of this year, and after we obtain the record of decision, then we will actually be able to go out and obtain permits and are needed right of ways. The record of decision, we'll grant the BLM right of way, and then we'll still have to work with the state land office and the private property owners that we'll either be crossing or maybe building structures on their properties. So with that, I think I can, you know, just ask if there's any other, you know, questions on the project, and I'll try to answer them. In the newsletters that have recently come out, if anybody wants a copy of them, I do have a couple extra with me, but otherwise, if I don't have enough, you could probably contact the BLM office in Santa Fe and obtain copies of these. People that were on the mailing list, they did receive a copy of it, hopefully. You can also obtain a CD on the complete final environmental impact statement, or you can go to certain libraries across the state or the BLM offices and also review the final EIS. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on the project.
Just real quick on the narrative of the project, just because some people may not know what it is, Sunzia has picked one of the windiest places on earth, I understand, right there by Corona in that area?
Yes. Basically, it's turned into, it started out approximately 460-mile project from north-central New Mexico, where there's a world-class wind energy, and would take it into the Panal Central, which is in between Tucson and Phoenix, and tie it into a major grid where they could take this energy to Arizona or California. And something I want to explain, this came up in one of the legislative hearings, somebody asked, they said, well, all this power's going to California, and he said, I don't know why we should have to produce power for California. Actually, the answer to that question was, they have some wind generators up near Santa Rosa, many have probably seen it on I-40. That is paid for by California, and wind energy is a little bit more than your regular generation, so it costs more. But the truth of the matter is, electricity's electricity. Once you put it on the line, it goes off the line wherever it's needed. So New Mexicans are getting the benefit of renewable energy, but the California people are paying for it. But the California people get to take a credit for it, because they are generating it, and so it's kind of, depends on how you look at it, but in this particular case, and I think it will be in case in many places, but New Mexico does have a renewable portfolio that, I believe it's 2025, that 20% of the New Mexico energy will have to come from renewable sources. Right now, California is not making that. So really, right now, most of the energy that's being produced, the wind energy in Luna County, just north of Dimming, that particular energy is bought and paid for by Tucson Electric Power. And Tucson Electric Power is no stranger in this area for generation. They own one-third of that major power plant that's just north of Dimming, as, along with Freeport-Mackinnon and Public Service Company New Mexico, so they all own an equal third of it, managing partners, Public Service Company New Mexico. There's also, in the Dimming newspaper this morning, they signed the industrial revenue bond for Macho Springs Solar, and that will be the partnering with the solar, with the wind energy at Macho Springs, is the name of the project north of Dimming, and that'll produce 50 more megawatts, but through solar. And where the solar and wind is important, and that's why New Mexico is so important in this scenario, because Arizona, although they have solar, they do not have the type of wind that New Mexico has, and you really need both. If you're going to sell renewable energy, you really need both, because on some days the sun doesn't shine, on some days the wind doesn't blow, and then you're going to probably even need a third partner, something like a peaking power plant, or even a natural gas fire plant near Dimming to kick in, because they have to be able to guarantee a load if they're going to sell electricity. So they want a combination of everything, and that's why the New Mexico wind is very attractive to these developers, and that's why they have come up with this power line, which is, would be two 500 KV lines, that would be major transmission lines. In New Mexico, right now, the largest line they have is a 345 KV, and so New Mexico has a very poor transmission, electrical transmission grid at this point. But the main thing Sunzia will help New Mexicans with is also, it'll open up some of these smaller lines and allow maybe some renewable energy to be tied in to the smaller lines as well. It's kind of like thinking about New Mexico before we had interstates. You have interchanges, and so you have the smaller lines tie into the substation, and so we're going to call Sunzia the first interstate transmission line through New Mexico, but we'll also have substations, so the power can be downloaded and used in New Mexico, or you can upload and send more power to the west or wherever it's needed.
So I'm sure some people in Grant County are wondering, why are you here talking to the Grant County Commission?
Well, Grant County Commission, you have a, mostly you'll probably call it your frying pan handle, but you have a 20-mile stretch of property that extends to Hachita, and that 20 miles is actually right along the western border of it, is right along the Hidago Grant County line. But most importantly, that peaking station is right on the west side, it's actually in Hidago County, but the line is situated almost right on the western line. You actually have two lines there. One is, one goes primarily to the peaking station, and that's the 115 KV line. The other one went to Plius, and so you don't really have a lot of power load needed in the Plius area right now with the smelter gone, but those two lines would make it very easily for some company to either upgrade those lines or use some of the capacity on the 115 KV line. So I think Grant County, in the long run, you know, has a very good chance to obtain some renewable energy, but at this time, without the major power lines, some of the smaller lines really do not have any capacity, or even the 115 that does have the capacity doesn't have any way to get it to a western market.
Basically, what you're saying is, is it would take an area that doesn't have a major power grid, put it there, where companies could relocate there if they chose to, and would be able to give Grant County grocery receipts and adhorum taxes and stuff like that, so it's good for Grant County?
Yes, I think, and I think just one of the major, you know, points of revenue is going to be, you know, what's happened recently in Luna County. The first project was a wind energy project, and that was around 50 megawatts of wind. That was a... Uh, that was about a hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar project, and Luna County authorized the issuance of industrial revenue bonds. They will receive a little over seven million dollars over a twenty-five-year period, uh, just mainly for authorizing the issues of, of those bonds. Uh, the more recent one, the, the solar energy, maybe a little bit more money, a hundred-and-thirty-five, a hundred-and-forty million dollars, but at the same time, Luna County will, will receive ten million dollars, uh, over a period of time, and they negotiated that they wanted more of their money upfront. So you have seventeen million dollars, uh, going into Luna County, which normally wouldn't have been there. And with, uh, the, the payment lieu of taxes, those revenues starting to fall off mainly because, uh, uh, you know, grazing fees and things like that, but, uh, so, so it would be another way that counties can, can see some, see some, uh, some more revenues come in, although it's, it's really not anything that you have to, uh, go out there and develop. I think you will probably see something happen in the solar, solar area, whether it's in, uh, you know, south closer to I ten, or even up, up in this area, along where you do have one, one of the power transmission lines that comes out of Luna Substation near, near Dimming and come up there, because, uh, that line itself will, will have some available capacity whenever you get a major power line, uh, for it to tie into at the substation.
That sounds good to me. I, I also saw in the news this week where Lincoln County, uh, passed a resolution supporting y'all's, uh, project. Is that something you need us to do, or would help, or?
Well, I think, I think what we, we would, we certainly appreciate all the help and, and, uh, we, if, if you would want to consider a resolution at some time, uh, we would certainly, uh, appreciate that. Uh, what happened in Lincoln County was, uh, was probably a major victory for us, and, and, uh, I really don't like to, you know, call it a victory over the military, but, uh, uh, that's been our main obstacle in, in New Mexico, and we've tried, uh, uh, like I said before, we've had over twenty-two hundred miles of alternative routes. A lot of those, a lot of the study in New Mexico has been at the request of military or, or because of the White Sands Missile Range. As you know, that White Sands Missile Range is, is approximately forty by a hundred miles long, and then they have what they call a general call-up area to, to the north of that. And, uh, in the last five years, they've had four different commands in, in charge at White Sands Missile Range. Each general has asked for something different. And, uh, the first one, uh, General Mann actually wrote a letter in two thousand nine and said, running along three-eighty, that seems simple. So Sunzia spent money, uh, planning the line along three-eighty, that's the highway between Carizoso and, uh, uh, San Antonio. So that seemed like a simple, uh, but that didn't work, and so we had to, uh, readjust it further, further, further north. And, and so they were actually even asking Lincoln County to consider restricting, uh, airspace, which would mean no wind generation. Well, that, uh, brought a lot of the ranchers in concerned about their private property rights and, and, uh, and with the failing, uh, you know, cow are growing, uh, you know, they're looking for means to supplement their income as well, and, and it's been proven in many times that the wind generation does not affect the cow are growing, so, uh, they're definitely in favor of it, and, and they asked Lincoln County Commissioners to please consider, you know, their dilemma at this point, and, and they sided a hundred percent with them, and they also asked that, uh, the two new commissioners said, we want our name on the resolution as well, supporting this. So that was a major, uh, victory for us, and we're very glad that they stood behind us, because they are neighbors of Otero County, and Otero County, there's no doubt about it, they, they have to support the military. Uh, military means everything for them, and we understand it, and we certainly doing everything we can to make this work for the military, because that's all we've ever wanted to be, is a win-win for everybody in the state of New Mexico.
This transmission line goes through no part of Otero County, right?
No part of Otero County, in fact, it's, uh, uh, even touching into Torrance County right now, which originally it wasn't. I mean, we've, we've moved, uh, this general call-up area, the northern boundary is approximately thirty miles north of the White Sands Missile Range, and, and for most of the part, we, we do dip across one corner of that general call-up area, which is private and state land mostly, and, and some BLM land, but, uh, uh, none of it is, is, uh, actually, uh, White Sands Missile Range area, but, uh, uh, that's where the preferred route is, it's, it's a little more than thirty miles in some areas north of White Sands Missile Range, and so, but like I said, we, we've offered to do everything we can do. Uh, somebody has suggested several times that we bury the line, that's just not cost feasible, it, it, it just, it just wouldn't work. And so, but we've offered even, uh, lower the lines, uh, lower the structures, uh, from a hundred-and-sixty-five feet to a hundred-and-thirty-five feet, and, and that means more, more power structures, because, uh, the lower you have it, the, uh, closer you have to build the structure, because the lines, because the lines sag. But, uh, so we've done everything we can to work with the military, and, and, and we're quite confident that, uh, we'll come to a resolution with the military on this.
I, I think the, the key to all of this is, um, where the wind is isn't necessarily where the people are, and if you want to have green energy via wind, uh, you're gonna have to have windmills somewhere where the wind is, and you've gotta get it to where the people are, and that's not here. So you can't, you can't have everything, you're gonna have to give up something.
Right. You know, California, um, several years back, they passed a prop- proposition, uh, uh, that they didn't want any more, uh, electrical generation in, in their state, but now they have a incentive to build renewable, uh, generation in, in the state. But, but in that period of time where they weren't allowing any, any new construction, uh, Arizona took advantage of that, and, uh, uh, when Duke Energy was building the power plant north of Dimming, there were ten power plants being built in Arizona, and most of that power was going to California, and probably still is.
People don't know, we're losing two power generation stations by two thousand seventeen up in the San Juan, based in the San Juan power plants, actually, we're losing, what, number one and number three, I think? So we have to make all that up with renewable energy, uh, in the next three years. So, any other questions for John? I'm sorry I dominated all that, but, uh...
Sounds like something that would be very interesting.
And I really look forward to having a, a big solar array down there in that panhandle that's...
I've been preaching to John since I, since I hit his chair. I love it.
Yeah, and, and there's already a, a company looking at a, an array that spans between Grant County and Hidalgo County, it's a two-phase array, that they'll start the Grant County side first and the Hidalgo side later. Um, they're trying to work with P and M, because P and M owns most of the infrastructure down there that John was speaking about, so that they could jump in their infrastructure to get into this new, um, high, high voltage line. Um, so they're just going through the permitting process, I spoke to them probably about, oh, a year and a half ago or two years ago, and it's just a long, you know, as John's just told us, it's a long drawn-out process, and all they're trying to do is build the transmission line, not get the approval to go on the ground, or do everything else, and work out agreements with P and M, uh, everything else. It's, it's, it's a long process to get the renewable energies up, but once you get them up, they're great.
Yeah, one, one, one other point, speaking of P and M's generators, uh, in, in, in San Juan, as I mentioned, P and M has one-third of that, that new, that, uh, gas fire generator in, in Dimming. It's only running at fifty percent capacity right now, because they do not have any, uh, power transmission lines to crank out any more than fifty percent. And, uh, I'm going to guess right now that P and M will try, if the Sunzia line gets built soon, they will try to figure out how to get, uh, some, some power off that major transmission line. So right now, we have three substations planned in, in New Mexico. I wouldn't be surprised if P and M built another substation, most likely in Socorro County, where they can get it up to their major grid in Albuquerque, where most of their, most of their power is, is needed, and, and, and that seems like a simple fix for them, to, uh, just maybe upgrade an existing line and then put a substation in and take some power off of Sunzia. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, John, appreciate it.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove the changing of the non-client meal rate from nine dollars to eight dollars for Grant County senior programs. It's always easy to go down, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, you know, if I made, if I'm a senior, I like to make this motion.
All right.
I'd like to mostly approve the, uh, changing of the non-client meal rate from nine dollars to eight dollars for the Grant County senior program.
Can I second? There's a motion in a second to change the non-client meal rate from nine dollars to eight dollars for the Grant County senior program. Is there any discussion on that motion? If anybody's not taking advantage of these facilities and eating the meals, uh, you really should, I, I eat out to, at Members in, uh, Santa Clara once in a while, and the food is actually very good.
You know, it's, it's a good way to socialize, too. I know that, uh, Jane and I eat one, uh, here in Silver, and, uh, uh, they've got a little library there and everything, it's, it's, it's a great place for, for seniors to go and socialize.
Okay. And they shoot you a pole, too.
Oh, they shoot, I wouldn't shoot him a pole, it's too rough for me.
Wouldn't have your eight dollars each meal.
I wouldn't have no eight bucks to eat my meal, exactly.
Okay. There's a motion in a second to approve the non-client rate nine to eight, is there any other further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye. Motion passes. Approve or disapprove transfer of Mini Sixteen, this is a brush truck from the Sapiro Creek Volunteer Fire and Rescue to the Upper Members Volunteer Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the transfer of the Mini Sixteen brush truck from Sapiro Creek Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue to Upper Members Volunteer Fire Department.
There's a motion in a second to approve the transfer of Mini Sixteen, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye. Motion passes. Contracts and agreements, approve or disapprove amendment to agreement A twelve twenty-two, services agreement with the Deer Oaks Employee Assistance Program for Work-Life, Health, and Wellness Prevention Services. Uh, we went over this pretty well on Tuesday, is there any, anything else on that?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, amendment to agreement A twelve twenty-two.
Can I second? There's a motion in a second to approve the amendment to the agreement A twelve twenty-two, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove agreement number A thirteen fifteen, joint powers agreement with the Town of Hurley for chip sealing of the Hurley Municipal Streets.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve agreement number A dash thirteen dash fifteen with Town of Hurley.
Second. There's a motion to approve agreement number A thirteen fifteen, is there any discussion on that motion?
I'd, I'd just like to see us continue to help these small towns. I think it's real good that we're helping them save some money and, uh, and get our, our county looking better, doing better.
Absolutely. Hope the roads are straighter in Hurley than they were in Bay.
They are. They are.
Bay road were a little wavy, and so it was a little harder.
Kenny, Kenny, Kenny Cott built Hurley, and they only knew about straight lines. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove agreement number A thirteen sixteen, grant, all right, this is a grant agreement with the Department of Finance and Administration, Local Government Division for the Grant County DWI Program. I think this is the last leg that we need to do for Cindy's stuff this year.
Yes, sir. Chair, I'd like to, make a motion to approve, uh, agreement number A thirteen sixteen.
Can I second? There's a motion in a second to approve agreement number A thirteen sixteen, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions. Approve or disapprove a resolution R thirteen forty-one, this is a declaration of emergency in Grant County due to the Silver Fire in the Gila National Forest.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution number R dash thirteen dash forty-one.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve resolution R thirteen forty-one, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R thirteen forty-two, this is rescinding resolution R eight thirty-eight, prudent fiscal practices, wage and hiring freeze, and this is being done because the, in the original agreement, we're lifting it, and the original agreement had said if the state gave raises, that we would lift this agreement, so...
Chair?
Yes?
Sir, I would, uh, move to, uh, approve R thirteen forty-two.
Can I second? There's a motion in a second to approve R thirteen forty-two, is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove resolution number R thirteen forty-three, amending the approved and adopted budget for fiscal year commencing July first.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the resolution number R dash thirteen dash forty-three.
Second. There's a motion in a second to approve the resolution R thirteen forty-three, um, what this is, is just cleaning up all the accounts for the end of the year and getting our budget in line for, for, uh, basically the current year we're in, finishing here in a few days. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Bids and requests for proposal. Approve, disapprove bid number twelve ten, North Hurley R U S Wastewater System Improvements.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve, uh, bid number twelve ten.
Which is the, is to J and S?
To J and S Plumbing. Yeah, J and S is... Yeah, we have to, and that, that's why we have to say, we made two, the other was, uh, first bid was J and S Plumbing.
Can I second that? There's a motion in a second to approve bid number twelve ten to J and S Plumbing for six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and twenty cents. It's nice to have a local contractor get a bid.
It's curious.
So is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove RFP number thirteen oh three, this is bank depository services. We only had one responded to the RFP, was Wells Fargo Bank.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, make the motion that we approve the RFP number thirteen dash zero three with Wells Fargo Bank.
Second. There's a motion in a proper second to approve the RFP thirteen oh three, bank depository services, and retaining Wells Fargo Bank as our bank depository services. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove RFP number thirteen oh four, inmate healthcare services and healthcare management services. This is, uh, it's been a long time coming, we've been working on this for a year, and it's gonna be fantastic. We're actually going to have healthcare at our detention facility, so...
It's gonna be good.
Take a motion?
It's been a long time. So, Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the RFP number thirteen zero four, inmate healthcare services and healthcare management services. Can I second?
And that's gonna go to Healthcare Partners Foundation, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. So any further, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
I would just like to, um, thank Commissioners for considering this, and, um, what it'll do is, we've always provided healthcare in the facility, unfortunately, we've had to transport people out, so this will eliminate some of those transports. There may be times that still when we transport out an individual, but this will allow that, and it also allow law enforcement to, uh, get inmates cleared in our facility, medically cleared, um, during the peak hours, you know? We'll look at when those are and work with the law enforcement agencies. Um, so it's gonna benefit everybody, um, around the board. Um, and as Mike spoke of, the company will originally come in and get it set up, and then once they get it set up, they try and contract with local providers to provide this service to us, uh, going forward. So it hopefully will generate money inside of Grant County and it won't leave.
And, Mr. Chairman, you know, it's also a, a safety issue, anytime you have to transfer prisoners, uh, there's a, there can be a potential problem. So as long as they're behind locked doors, better off.
Absolutely, because of the potential of getting a guard hurt, or an inmate escaping and getting other people hurt, and, uh, I know the sheriff doesn't have enough to do to, other than chase an inmate, so... Anyway, so there's a motion in a second to approve this. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I'd take a motion to recess the Board of County Commissioners.
Move to recess, second.
All those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll call the order, the Grant County Inidget and Healthcare Claims Board. We have to approve or disapprove the May two thousand thirteen health plan claims. Um, John went over this, we have thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-five claims for five-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-and... We have 1,375 claims for $529,836.50 that are local and we have eight claims, non-local, out-of-county claims for $32,939.58 for a total of $562.76.8. This has been, no, no claims are recommended to be denied and this was verified by Elizabeth Alred, the AVP of Finance and Controller at the hospital and also gone over here by our county people. So is there any discussion on that? Can I get a motion then?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the May 2013 Health Plan Claims Indigent.
Second. There's a motion in a second to approve the May 2013 Health Plan Claims. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, I take a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Claims Board.
So move to adjourn.
All those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners and we'll stand for county reports. Sheriff, do you have anything new?
No, I don't, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Assessor, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, I don't.
Very good. How are you today?
Good, sir.
Have you got something?
Yeah, just a simple Steve apology. He couldn't be here today. He's in the meeting in Albuquerque with DPD and DFA. But what we just wanted to remind people is in a lot of part of May, we sent out courtesy letters to all taxpayers that were delinquent for 2010 to give them the option to come in and get caught up on that so they do not make the state list. And so last is going to be this Friday, tomorrow. So if you are able to come in and pay it, pay off the state list and accrue more costs, we'd appreciate if you can get in today. After that, we will be sending the list to the state for all the 2010 delinquent taxes. So anybody has any questions, they can call our office at 574-0055.
Okay. Thank you very much, Al. Mr. Clerk, have anything else?
Mr. Clerk, I did ask John the proofs for the ballot. If you guys just look over those real quick whenever you get a chance.
Put them in bigger print.
It would be bigger print, that's just your proof, but if everything looks good, once I get the approval from, from the Commission, Chairman, John, whoever needs to give me that approval, I'll send it over to them and we'll start mailing out ballots the 29th.
So we are going to go with the 29th? I think that's a good idea. That's great. That was my question. Any questions for Clerk? Okay, Mr. Manager?
Um, I think we have worked with Rob on that. You all have that. If you'll just let me know if you see any changes to the ballot, then I'll get with Rob. They were, this morning coming in, they poured the concrete on this stem wall out here as part of that project going. It's looking good, doing a really good job moving along on that. So once we get this one side done, like I said, then we'll really see some progress of tearing out the other, the rest of the platform and the other, the handicap ramp and moving towards the other side of the building to get that completed. We're going to meet with Dr. Shepherd this afternoon, myself and the Chairman, to start talking about the tax, how to promote the tax more. Western New Mexico University has said that they will pay for a billboard to promote the capital infrastructure tax that we're going for with the residents for the vote on the 19th. So that's, they're working on that, so we'll talk some more about that today. So we may see a billboard go up on that issue out there in the public. So we can try and get as much participation to, to get this tax passed and, and start providing a better quality of life for some of the, for the residents of Grant County in the projects. Other than that, we're just business as usual. We've advertised for the July 3rd special meeting. It'll be two items on the agenda. The Abby spoke of, the proclamation and the ordinance to renew those. So there, that has already been sent to the paper, should be in the paper today. And so it'll be July 3rd at 9:00 and Abby will have the packets put together for you and be here to present that to y'all. I'll be out of town, so I won't be here at that meeting.
Okay. Anything else? Any questions for John?
Nope.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner?
Just want to remind everyone that Copper Little League is hosting the All-Stars this year. There'll be a lot of traffic there in the Bexar area from July 1st through July 13th. There are a lot of people coming in. We have Las Cruces teams coming in, Larderburg teams, Deming teams and so just be careful when you're passing through, through Bexar. You know, last thing we need is for somebody to get hit by a car, what have you. And I mean, Copper's really doing a lot to, to organize this, so we wish him a lot of luck. We also, I also wanted to recommend that we put on the next agenda, the Eco Management Team we had talked about before, you know, team that we want to put together so that we can write for grants and what have you to protect our, our watersheds, watershed protection, if we can go ahead and do that.
Did you get your names?
Pretty much.
Did you get your mind?
I'm sure you want to participate in that too, right?
Uh, well, you and I both can, sure.
Yeah, but we can, you'll be my alternate?
I'll be your alternate.
All right.
Listen.
Go ahead.
You want to?
Another one, right?
I have five meetings.
They said it was just going to be two meetings a month and I said, yes.
You guys did a lot of that too.
I didn't talk about the meetings. Well, you can't blame that one on me.
Okay. Well, I, I think if you don't have some public participation in that committee though, that we really won't get anything done and you also have to have some government participation. It's got to be a joint, yeah?
We have talked about getting together with, of course, the Forest Service, County Representation and John Reed, we just heard a little bit ago, his name was thrown out. We also have a few public participat, participants that have been working with Forest Service in their prior, prior lives. Now they're retired, so they want to participate. And anyone else you want to come up with, let me know.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Commissioner?
I think I got, I had several meetings, one of them that was really interesting is I had the privilege to sit in on a meeting and be a part of it in Cliff, New Mexico, where citizens were coming together to try to make their community a better place to live and what they're interested in is a recreational center and something for the, both the adults and the youth to participate in. So it's going to be a long process and we're looking into it now. So it was good to see a sizable group come together the first time that was interested. So we're excited about it. Already, they have already planned, I think the 11th of this next month, coming together on the present school grounds where they're going to do some work on their own and clean it up and have hamburgers and hot dogs afterwards. So grab your gloves and your rake and come on out. Thank you.
Okay. I just got a couple of things myself. I, I went to a meeting with P&amp;M and talked about San Juan Generation, those two plants coming off and, and the green energy it's going to take to replace that. And one of the things that came up was the photovoltaic possibilities on top of our, on top of our buildings and out at the detention center. And now I hadn't even thought about the, the possibilities of getting Freeport-McMoran online with where the old Plies plant was since there's already lines running down there if we can get Sunzilla off and maybe some other stuff in, in Grant County also. So I think that, I know that this isn't the beginning of a new year, but it's the beginning of a new fiscal year for us in this next meeting in July. I think there's a couple of things that we need to, to come together and, and kind of set as goals. One of them, I think we need to, with, with the uncertainty of state and federal funding any longer, and the sheriff and I have talked about this several times, we got to get off the, the reoccurring funding of, of Pilt and using that as reoccurring funding. We got to find a way to use that as projects only. We can fund projects at Cliff. We can fund projects on the Members that Hurley, at Bexar and Silver City for youth. We can, we can finish our building out here if we, if we take that and get that out of our reoccurring funding. We got to set that up as one of our goals. If it comes, that's great, we'll do a project with it. If it doesn't come, then we're not hurt. We're not having to lay off officers, we're not having to dim the lights. We can go on with life as it is. The other thing along with that, because of the uncertainty of funding, I think we need, the state only has a set three-twelfths reserve. We need to look at moving that up to five-twelfths. And I'm not saying you have to move it to five-twelfths all in one swoop, but hopefully we could move that up a little at a time and get to where we have five-twelfths reserve. That way, when we do have a hiccup, we'll be okay. There's a lot, a lot of places out there with whole harmless going away and stuff that are going to be in, in deep trouble. Our financial position in the state is an envy of the other counties. We are in good shape compared to the other counties. So a lot of that has to do with, with John Lyndon's staff, always staying on it and always being diligent on it, but I think that's something important. ICIP is, is going to be the next thing. Fairly recently, we're going to have to start picking our projects. We have to, we didn't get the money we asked for from the legislature last year to, to finish our building. We're going to have to finish our building. I'm almost tired of talking about this, but I'm never going to stop. We got to do our courthouse. We have a 100-year-old building with screw-in fuses. We have to finish our courthouse. We have to have proper heating and cooling. We have to have proper electricity. P&amp;M had some advice when I met with them the other day and I'm going to get Anthony and John involved in that. We got to find some grants somewhere to do that. It's above our ability just to fix the, the electrical alone with $750,000. We're going to have a building that is useless if we don't take care of it and we got to take care of it now. So guess for not having much to say, I had a lot to say. And at this time, I take a motion to adjourn unless somebody else has something else.
So move. Second.
All those in favor, signal five, say aye.
Aye.